Earl, I was having a pretty heavy thunderstorm out here in Napoleon. Wonder if that caused our problems.
It could be anything, Phil. Who knows? Here we are, though. Looks like we're good now.
Hey Rodney, what's that plant behind you?
That's a spider plant. I don't know what all their names are, but there are all kinds of them around here. There's some more there, and there's more there. I don't know. I just live in a greenhouse.
You ready, Phil?
Yeah, I get the agenda on my other phone, on my other computer. We're about, yes, hang on. Wait, it's slow. Okay, I am in. I could call the your government meeting to order for today, September 8th. First up, I need approval of the agenda. Approved by Earl Woski, seconded by Rodney. All in favor indicate by saying aye, or give the sign. Passes unanimously, it looks like. Thank you. Public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
Debbie Kelly?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Today, I'm representing the Jackson County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And in front of you this morning, you'll have the abolishment resolution for the the former Schweickert LLC Development, formerly known as Northwest Refugees, which is now known as Granger. The JCBRA has collected the available tax increment revenues from the property and for, to reimburse for eligible costs, activities, admin costs for the authority, and we've started depositing into our local Brownfield revolving fund. So this morning, we would ask that you just simply consider approval of the resolution to forward to the full county commission this morning. And that's all I had unless there's any questions later in the agenda. Thank you so much.
Okay, board, we got a couple people ahead of ourselves. She should have been under enterprise group, item 4B. We'll jump ahead as long as she's here and any discussion on this? Do I have a motion and support to abolish the Northwest Refugees Plan?
I'll move to adopt the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Waltz. All in favor indicate by saying aye or give the sign. Motion passes. Okay, we'll go back. We approved the agenda. Wait, that's for public comment. That's where Debbie appeared. Sounds like that was the only comment. So we have to approve the amendments from August 8th. Your motion is important to approve the minutes from August 8th. Approved by motion by Rodney, supported by Earl. All in favor indicate by saying aye, give the sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll jump ahead now to the quarterly treasures report. Are you there, Karen? Karen Kaufman, are you there?
She's in, I just promoted her.
Yes, I am here. Good morning. Hold on, I'll start. Aha, there we go. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Karen.
And you can hear me fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. So about a couple weeks ago, I sent off my quarterly report. Hopefully you have that in front of you. I can highlight the items and I guess more importantly, we'll open it up for questions if you have any, but the first major bullet point that I wanted to talk about was in light of COVID-19, our governor had an executive order 2020-106 that effectively moved back, the tax foreclosure got a deadline from March 31st to June 29th, 2020. So, and that was the last day to pay the 2017 taxes. So we have kind of had to modify and adapt and push our, all of our work back. But we have since foreclosed. As a result of that foreclosure, we ended up foreclosing on 109 parcels. I have included in the packet of information, some nice visual graphs. There's two different graphs. And as you can see, the 109 parcels that we foreclosed on this year is down significantly from last year. And it looks like we're getting close to our 2009 levels, which is very good news. So I'm happy to report that our foreclosures continue to decrease in Jackson, and I think that's a direct result of our foreclosure prevention efforts. If you wanted the breakdown with regard to the 109 parcels, there's another document there that breaks it out per the city parcels as well as the township parcels and then county totals. So you'll see for 2020, in the city of Jackson, we foreclosed on a total of 57 parcels. Of that 57, 29 were improved. Now, again, the definition of improved means a structure, a house, a garage. It could be a blighted property. It could be a burnt out property. So, and that's all of the above, and that number does include all of those. We had 28 vacant lots in the city, and again, this is a nice reference because it shows that both of those numbers are decreased as compared to last year. Moving on to the township, for this year, we foreclosed on 19 improved properties and 33 vacant lots. And again, those numbers have decreased as compared to last year's numbers. So for the county total, the total improved properties were 48 and 61 vacant. And again, those numbers across the board have decreased as compared to last year. So I think those numbers are significant to highlight. I will tell you that of the 109 parcels that we foreclosed on, two of those parcels were taken under the township's right, first right of refusal. So Tompkins Township purchased a house under their first right, and Norval Township also purchased a vacant lot under their first right. So we're going to our first tax foreclosure, foreclosure auction, which will be Friday, September 18th. It will be completely online this year. There will not be a site where people can congregate and gather. And that is a new a new development as a result of the current governor's executive orders. So it, the auction will only be online. I've given you the website address of Title Check. If you wish to check that auction out and find out more details about what that will look like. With regard to this tax foreclosure cycle, in years past, we have done evictions for those properties that have people residing in them after we foreclosed. Once we foreclose on the properties for non-payment of taxes, they become property and ownership of Jackson County. So it has been past practice that we have done evictions. This year, however, because of COVID-19 and the governor's executive orders and an eviction moratorium, we did not do evictions. We have not set a new date or a date yet for the second tax foreclosure auction. We are waiting until after the first foreclosure auction to see what that second auction will look like. And then the last two bullet points on my report. There was a recent Supreme Court decision in the Raffaele case. And that originated out of Oakland County. That judgment came down July 17th, 2020. This will drastically, and I mean drastically, change what and how county treasurers across the state of Michigan will now perform their job functions if they are the foreclosing governmental unit. We are actively, as an association statewide meeting, we have had meeting upon meeting upon meeting. We are in the midst of preparing and finalizing our legislative, legislative language for a bill that we believe will be ready to be presented to the House tomorrow. And we've been working diligently on that with regard to the Raffaele decision and what that's going to look like moving forward. As I indicated in my report, at this time, there is no legal mechanism in place that provides law or guidance on how to implement this Supreme Court ruling. That's why we're taking a proactive approach and being a part of the new law that needs to be either crafted or modified to accommodate this. And lastly, we are continuing to work through our pay as you stay program. We are in the middle of education and communication with the local units of government. Most recently, we've reached out to the local units to ask them for a listing of those taxpayers that they have granted a poverty exemption at the local unit. That is the, one of the first steps in this pay as you stay program. So we're working diligently with them, trying to get information as we move through this new law that will enable us hopefully to assist taxpayers and reduce fees and penalties through this program. Lastly, Commissioner Plesky sent out a request at 9:00 PM last night wanting a map of the tax foreclosure breakdown, which we usually do provide, and I think it got overlooked this year because of all the changes that we've had, but regardless, it is in your mailbox. I have sent it out and you should have it for your preview if you wish to know what tax foreclosures specifically impact your your constituents and your jurisdictions. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Plesky.
Not a question, but simply a comment. Thank you, Madam Treasurer, for sending out that information.
You're welcome.
Questions? Daniel, Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Karen. How are you today?
Good morning, I'm well, thank you.
Good. Just a couple of questions for you right quick. With that Supreme Court decision on the Raphael case, I'm just curious if you have any any foresight on how that will financially impact your department?
That is the $64,000 question right now, unfortunately, Commissioner Mahoney, and I, and I, I do say that tongue in cheek. Each county is going to be impacted differently depending on the breadth and depth of foreclosures that they have done. The issue is, and I, I can't answer your question other than by saying this. At this point, we do not know until the legislature and cases pending right now in the Oakland, Oakland Circuit Court, how far back we need to go with regard to looking at which years for tax foreclosure. We've heard one year, we've heard two years, we've heard six years. So it really depends on what the circuit courts do with regard to how far back, if we have to go back. It could also be prospective versus retroactive. That would be the best case scenario. But unfortunately, we're waiting for the circuit courts to decide what that will look like.
Okay, for, for our particular county, well, two things. One, I've gotten a constituent passed to me from, from Julie Alexander, who had some concerns about this very subject and is actually asking how they can or who they need to contact about a property that may have been sold, I guess, by the county, and they are asking like how they seek reimbursement. I don't know if, if you've heard about this issue, but I can pass you the, the constituents' information. I just wanted to mention that. That's not really a question. But my question is for, for our particular county, when we do have those overages, where we sell a property for more than the foreclosure amount is, what do we generally do with those proceeds? Where do they go to? Is that something that's put into your department's budget? Like, how is that, how is no longer being able to sell those properties for more than what's owed on them? How is that going to impact us? Is what I'm curious about, like moving forward and not even retrospectively, but from, from this point moving forward, how's that going to directly impact us?
So that's a wonderful question, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. With regard to when a property is foreclosed on and there are remaining proceeds that come in as a result of the sale of the tax foreclosed properties, those dollars went back into the delinquent tax revolving fund. And in Jackson County, the delinquent tax revolving fund has been used to help finance capital improvement projects. So with regard to that, I think our county controller has spoken to all of the commissioners with regard to the the possible exposure, possible concerns regarding going forward with regard to the capital improvement dollars being available or not being available. So I think that's part of the answer to that question. With regard to the county treasurer's office, the county treasurer still collects penalties, fees, and interest. And as I've mentioned before, the county treasurer operates as an enterprise fund. Any of those penalties, fees, and interests that are in the law that we have the ability and actually shall collect, they go to, to take care of any of, any and all of the expenses that come out of this department. So we, any of the fees, the penalties, interest, cover all of the expenses that we have for our department. So it's kind of a bifurcated answer, but I, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, yes, ma'am, it does. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I have one last question. If you could just update me on if there's any, any at all light at the end of the tunnel for seeing our land bank become reactive at any point in time. I'm just curious if there's been any additional movement or work in that area. I know things have been kind of weird and responsibilities have kind of been shifted with COVID going on and especially in your office with the delay of the tax foreclosures, but I'm just curious if there's any plans for any movement or if there's anything to look forward to for land bank.
Yes, with regard to the land bank, I just want to remind the commissioners that it is a separate entity, and there is no statutory obligation for any county treasurer in the state of Michigan to have a land bank. So this entity was created before I came into office, and we have been trying to manage the land bank appropriately. As I indicated in my separate email to you, Commissioner Mahoney, with regard to that, it boils down to lack of political will for wanting a land bank as well as funding for the land bank. You and I've had conversations with regard to that, and I'm going out now publicly and going to say it out here in a meeting. So those are the concerns that I have. Now, bigger issue is, as a result of the Raffaele ruling, land banks in the state of Michigan will, and I will stress, will be impacted by this Supreme Court ruling. In fact, I've been on several meetings with regard to that through the Michigan Association of Landbanks. And it is very clear that the future of land banks in Michigan might be no longer. And that is because the majority of land banks throughout the state of Michigan take properties under the first right of refusal. Raffaele changes that. So as of the very near future with the land bank, I hesitate to even step my foot in that water right now because we don't know what is going to happen with regard to what the legislature proposes, legislature proposes now going forward. But I would really hesitate land banks taking any property with regard to this new Supreme Court ruling, and that has been the sentiment statewide.
If I may just chime in there. Land banks, I can tell you that a number of my peers, we've been discussing it in committee with, I'm on a committee with Mac, working on this issue. And frankly, it sounds like the land banks, I think Karen's on the money, the land banks probably going to go by the wayside. I mean, at least that's the sentiment, talking to other county administrators around the county, around the state, rather, is that without this Raffaele decision probably spells the end to land banks. But yet, you know, we'll wait and see how it plays out, but that's what it sounds like at this point.
Thank you, Mike. Any further questions? Look to Karen. Karen, I have one.
Yes, please.
As you go through this next auction, as you raise funds to reimburse, it's the state we reimburse at this point with the proceeds from the delinquent taxes we raise?
Yeah, well, no, not exactly. So we will be watching this whole auction cycle now after Raffaele has, has been determined. So in my mind, this is what we will need to do. Any of the excess proceeds from the sale and the auction, we will have to set aside, so to speak. And we need to wait to see what the legislature passes that tells us what to do with those dollars. We are looking at a possible process where claimants, which would be tax foreclosed owners, need to file notification with the state of Michigan to claim any proceeds. And that's very high level, what we're talking about now in our proposed legislation that we'll be dropping this week. What the legislature finally agrees upon and passes and implements into law, we don't know yet, obviously. So it's too soon to tell, Commissioner Duckham. I wish I had a more solid answer for you. But those monies will be set aside and waiting for some final determination on how county treasurers deal with those dollars. But I can tell you that those remaining proceeds, excess proceeds will no longer be available to the county commissioners to, to utilize as in the past.
Okay, now what do you call excess proceeds? We sell home A for $22,000 and there's 15 owed in taxes, so we have an excess of $6,000.
Roughly 10%.
Okay, we sell home B for $10,000 and $17,000 is owed on taxes. How do we make up? How do we give back the, the excess proceeds from sale A and still cover sale B?
And therein lies the problem.
Yes.
Therein lies the problem. Yeah, because you know, it's not that we make money on these auctions. And there has not been any addressing of the situation of the blighted properties, the contaminated properties, the vacant lots that have you know, unknown owners or legal issues or, you know, strip of the land, unwanted properties, right? That has not been addressed in, in the Raffaele. So more often than not, we are trying to balance those properties that we get that people no longer want to own. We foreclose on them and the taxes remain unpaid. And we have to eat that. Now, what part of the process is, and why I say that Raffaele is not just county treasurers, it's not at the county level, it's going to impact municipalities. The local units of government will be charged back for those losses. Again, the foreclosing governmental unit is responsible for maintaining and recouping those monies that are due back to the county. So there is a chargeback that will occur. So municipalities will be impacted by this. School districts will be impacted by this. Any of the taxing jurisdictions where we've paid out monies and it goes to auction and doesn't sell, we can charge back to recoup those dollars.
So as an example, the Michener property, the city would have taken a huge hit.
We all would have taken a huge hit. Yeah.
Okay.
$1.6 million and growing because we're still dealing with that property. But it's the right thing to do for our community because it was a highly contaminated property.
You then, in essence, you're going to just put on deposit, we're going to set on the money raised from the auction.
And until we get direction as to what we need to do with that and how to, how to disseminate those funds, then we will go from there. Yes.
You, you can't even do chargebacks until then either.
I don't think so.
I don't see how. Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions for Treasurer Kaufman? Okay, that's all for that. Okay, that's all for that, Karen. Any, uh, any other presentation?
No, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your report, Karen.
Yes, you're welcome.
Goodbye. Move on to item 4D, finance. Is our finance director out there?
Don't believe Cecilia could join us. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I was just sharing that I don't believe Cecilia can join us. I had a conversation with her and she mentioned she had some family plans.
Okay.
Today.
We will jump ahead and check back at the end of the meeting. So we'll go to 4E, facilities.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, Phil, about three years ago, you asked me if I was done reorganizing our department. And I said, no, we have one more left to do. And I blinked my eyes and three years later, here we are.
Okay. This is your last one then, right?
It is.
Okay.
Our longtime safety training officer and electrical supervisor has retired. Uh, Tim Yost has been in this department for years and years and helped to make this department the success that it is. And with Tim's departure, we looked at this position and together with HR and with guidance from Administrator Overton, we came up with a new position. This is a facility maintenance and training supervisor position. And after listening to Karen's presentation about the revolving delinquent tax fund, this position fits right in with that in the fact that we are now self-performing a lot of our construction projects, albeit at a suite level, not building buildings, but this position goes hand in hand with that. This is a, a position where this person could have their tool belt on, uh, swinging a hammer or conducting, uh, confined space training. It's, it's really an all-inclusive type position. And then along with this, we were also tasked with, uh, reducing our budget by eight percent. And working this over with our team, we decided that we would not fill a vacant position. And by not filling that vacant position, we're projected to save $108,000. That's $83,000 for 2021 and $25,000 for the rest of 2020.
Does that get you your eight percent or darn close to it?
It, it actually went a little over because we are overachievers.
Yes, you guys are. I commend you and your department.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, uh, questions?
Commissioner. Yes, Mr. Chair, is, uh, is action necessary by us or is it something that administration can, um, simply implement, um, on their own?
Well, I, I read on the agenda, we approved the facilities reorganization plan, then it goes forward to the full board.
Then, then sir, I'll, I'll move to adopt this, uh, recommendation with, uh, with gratitude for, uh, the work that's been done.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Commissioner Walz, thank you. All in favor, give a sign or say aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Rick. You have another item here?
I do.
Dalton Road landfill.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think the best way to describe this one is just looking at a house with a basement. Normally around the perimeter of the basement is a drain pipe that, that leads into a sump pump that then ejects the water out from around the foundation so that you don't have water in your basement. Well, in our closed landfill, we have three cells and each one of these cells has a, a drain pipe perimeter that leads into a leachate collection tank. And on leachate tank number one, this is where on a day like today, when we're blessed with rain, uh, the water will percolate through the soil, be collected by these drain pipes along the perimeters and then drain into a, a collection tank that we pump out at least once a week. Sometimes it could be two or three times a week. It just depends on the amount of precipitation that we have. Well, long story short, on phase one, this is collection tank one, we've noticed over the past year or so that it was producing less and less leachate. And then we noticed that we had, uh, discoloration on the ground. And then after staff did in-service, um, self-performed investigation, we discovered that the drain was clogged solid. Th- this is an H, eight inch PVC and it was just packed full. And then we found out further down the line towards the tank, the pipe itself had broken. So by state statute, we are required to maintain this landfill. And we went out and we could find some folks who could, well, one could replace the piping, but not the specialized site restoration. Then we found another company that could do the restoration, but not the pipe repair. It's along the lines of a, just like a leaking underground gasoline storage tank. Uh, it's just with this one, it's a little more complex than, than that.
Okay, I'm trying to miss of changing cars, my computer's getting ready to die. Uh, any questions for, for Rick on this? Repair he has to do with the landfill. Okay, the questions, whether motion and support? Supported by Rodney, motion by Rodney, supported by Corey. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, or give us a, there we are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, bye. Uh, next up, we're item G, parks. Are you there, Kyle?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, go ahead, your item G parks, where at the Clark Lake Community Park Playground Purchase?
Okay, well, improvements to playground and playground safety was something that we talked a lot about throughout the village campaign for the parks a couple of years back. Um, the playground at Clark Lake County Park is one of our more, uh, relic-type playgrounds, definitely passed its useful life and needs to be replaced. Uh, we did have a public engagement session at Columbia Township, uh, last summer, back in June of 2019. And the purpose was to provide potential ideas for, for improvements to Clark Lake County Park. Playground improvements was one of the top answers. Um, I've, I've provided some, some pictures of the existing equipment and some, some design of the new equipment. We did provide a budget of forty-two thousand to sixty to six different playground companies. And we did select the lowest bid, but quotes were analyzed by, by price and, and also play value. This would be ordered upon approval and, and installed yet, uh, this fall.
Okay, I commend you on, on this process. However, I've been in contact, approached by a group called the Clark Lake Parks Commission, be a group of locals that come to the, the meetings that, uh, Jeff Holvater put on for people interested in parks and he went bounced around the county and believed a bit different parks. And, uh, they found this was on the agenda, but their number one, uh, concern was, uh, security and safety by fencing the park in. And, uh, they're concerned that we've bypassed their first request. Uh, I, I suppose there's already a plan in process, maybe we bought the equipment on deal because it's the end of the season or what's your, your, your comeback on the request for, uh, repairing the fencing and so they want to fence off the, uh, Clark Lake clubhouse, the clubhouse, uh, pavilion up on the hill? And, uh, from park activity? Um, do you know anything about this?
Yeah, sure. So yes, improving the, uh, the fence and the perimeter, the definition of the park was, was a full topic, it was number one. That is something that is still in the works yet for this fall, this, the, uh, the playground just has a simply, it has a longer lead time, so it's something we need to get started on here.
I explained to her that may be the case. Now, I've heard that we're not going through repair fence, we're going to use large boulders and leave a fence down, or are we going to do both?
We've talked, uh, with the, uh, with the group of stakeholders, they're mostly from the township there, from the township offices, the, um, the treasurer and the supervisor about, uh, boulders as, as a solution, yes, to replacing the chain link fence.
Okay, so how would, would the boulders keep the people out of the, the Clark Lake Pavilion Clubhouse? Or that fence going to be, going to be repaired?
Well, so the pavilion, I think is, that's an idea that they have, uh, decided not to move forward with the, the folks at the community center.
For lack of famili- familiarity, it's the house on top of the hill that they have that, uh, parties in and stuff, it was donated and moved to Park's property. It, it's farthest away from the lake. Can you picture that in your mind?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so the, I think the fence, um, being replaced, that is, uh, along the lake there and then there, there's certainly some repairs that could be made to the fence up near the, up near the community center. That's more of a job and then the boulders are replacing the, uh, the fence along Ocean Beach Drive.
Okay, so you're going to replace the fence along the, the activity center, then how about, uh, the fence separating the park from the community right directly to the west? Because there's a road that dead ends at the Park's west side fence. And, uh, I don't think boulders would work in that case because people don't want somebody coming over into their yard because the park's real full. So was that fence going to be replaced?
Uh, I think I'll have to go look at specifically, look at this more in person on your questions on, so you're talking on the west side of, of the existing lot there?
Yes, it would be farthest away from Ocean Beach Road on the opposite side.
Yeah, we, I'm certainly open to making repairs to that. That wasn't, uh, probably on the radar as much as the other, other portions, but, um, I mean, it's easily, easily can be done though.
Okay, the gentleman that's, it's been contacting me, his name is Rick Belcher and he's part of this group and they just want it done right. The, the community park on the west side of the lake that's over the township, when it was improved, they had a big surge in attendance and it ended up being illegal parking and illegal drug activity, you're going to have that anywhere, but they tried to curl, control it through fencing and all, and cameras, security cameras, minor drinking, stuff like that. They, they don't want that coming to this side of the park. I don't know if fencing would help, but they're concerned is all.
Okay, well, I know, I know, Rick, I can reach out and.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Okay, uh, then the Clark Lake, uh, Playground Purchase, uh, any other questions, committee? It's not, we need a motion and support to approve this purchase? Okay, approved by, uh, Commissioner Plesky, seconded by Commissioner Walz. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Give a sign, passes unanimously, thank you, Board. Okay, uh, you have another topic here, electrical system with Cascade Falls. Go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, I know, we provided some, some updates back and I guess it's been about two months now, late June, early July, uh, we lost, uh, the main power feed to the Cascades. We've been surviving on, uh, temporary power via generators since that time as a solution to keep it open and keep this flash pad open throughout the remainder of the season here. Um, since that time, we've been working to, to diagnose the issue and working with Commonwealth, uh, associates to, uh, to design a solution that will last for, for decades to come, basically. Um, so to repair the existing, uh, where the line broke basically was about, was about $30,000 and there wasn't a whole lot of certainty that it would, uh, it would really be a complete fix, it could have additional faults and, and the rest of the system was still, still original, basically. So we worked with Commonwealth to design, uh, a robust system to last for decades to come, like I said. Um, it was out to bid for, for three weeks. Uh, the bids came back, uh, ranging from 167,000 to 258,000. Cochran Electric was a little bid, they also did provide a, an alternate of 120,000. Uh, so since the time of this, uh, staff report, we have had a, a meeting with Cochran and Commonwealth to talk through this alternate bid. It was a, a value engineering meeting, basically. So I think the, uh, the price is going to be more likely around 130,000, one of the big items that was going to be, uh, that was proposed by Cochran and has been since approved by Commonwealth, the engineer is, is changing the, uh, high voltage switch from a six compartment to a PMH 12. So that saves about $42,000. Um, it's a, it's a more than acceptable solution in the eyes of the engineer. We do have.
Okay, how about the, the pumps? I know the pumps were issued before, they're 1930 version electrical pumps that there's no other parts or replacements for, are we just replacing the whole pumping system?
That is still, still needs to be done, basically. Last year, we replaced the pumps to the three vertical spray fountains, but, but yes, there is still a lot of, uh, a lot of original equipment that needs to be replaced and this is, it's all, it's all past due and needs to be done and this is one of the, one of the first steps of, of moving forward.
Hey, Commissioner Plesky has a question.
I was about to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, we'll take a motion.
I would move the adoption of the staff recommendation with a cost not to exceed 167,300.
Thank you, we have support. Best support from Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Most emphatically unanimously. Okay, Kyle, we'll move on to the next one then, you're good salesman there. Item I, uh, Park M DNR Trust Fund Project Agreement Resolution.
Okay, well, you probably recall, we talked about this, uh, back in February of 2019, this board passed a resolution to authorize a submission of a, of a grant application to the DNR, um, it's for a ADAC kayak canoe launch at Vander Cook Lake County Park. Um, back in December, just this past December, 2019, the trust fund board recommended approval of this project and essentially, um, a formal grant offer is made, um, three to six months after the recommendation via the issuance of a project agreement. So this year was a little bit later than typical, um, with just things at the state level being delayed with COVID. Uh, so the, the project agreement was just issued back in, uh, one month ago in August. So this is, uh, the final step to, to move forward on the grant project, basically is accepting the project agreement with the resolution.
Okay, any questions, Council? Board? Not any to motion and support? Motion by Kennedy, supported by Plesky. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Throw the sign, passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. Uh, we got one more thing here, Parks Cascade Water Study.
Hi, Commissioners, this is Christopher. We have, um, both Angie Klein and Amelia McElhany on the lines. Um, I'm looking for Amelia here. Amelia, can you turn on your camera?
My camera's on, Christopher.
There you are, I see you now.
Hi.
Okay, Commissioners can see you as well. So I'd like to introduce Amelia, if I may. Um, she is a, a very talented, um, graduate engineer from Texas A&amp;M University.
Recording.
And we actually encountered her, um, while we were researching our road recycling program. Our engineers, uh, myself and a couple of our engineers visited the, um, uh, the laboratory at Texas A&amp;M, which is a national leader in road recycling, to learn how to do our mix designs. And that has paid off tremendously for us and Amelia's actually been running the lab, uh, both last summer and this summer as an intern with us. So what was nice about recruiting her is that she had applied or intended to at the time, applied to the University of Michigan for a master's degree program in civil engineering. And so she was accepted, of course, and has, uh, been studying there. She's now in her second year of that master's program and, uh, she'll be graduating here in May and it is our hope that, uh, And, uh, she'll be graduating here in May. And it is our hope that, uh, she would, uh, join our staff because her focus is water resource engineering, hydrology, hydraulics, environmental issues. And we, we really want to build that strength here, um, uh, within the county and partnership with the Drain Commissioner and partnership with the Parks Department and so forth. So no further ado, I'll turn it over you, to you, uh, Amelia. And, uh, if you want to say a few words and then start your, your pre- presentation, that'd be great. And keep in mind, we need to be done, I believe, uh, in about five to ten minutes. Is that correct?
We have another meeting in eleven.
Great. Thank you, Amelia. Go ahead.
I can hear that. Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning. Um, we are currently looking at I'm sorry, Darius, did not mean to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we are doing a watershed analysis for the Cascades Lagoons. And so I will be going through the presentation of kind of what we're expecting to accomplish, what we're hoping to accomplish and kind of just an idea of where this project is going to be taking us. Share my screen here. Beginning, okay. So going through our Cascades Park Water Influence Study by the Jackson DOT. Alright, so this problem was first addressed, first came to us when we had homes off of Southwest Avenue that had flooding in their basements, which of course, we can't have. It's not a sustainable way to live for anyone. But also indicated that there might be other issues in the area. So with using this as an additional, with an initial problem that we need to solve, we also are going to take the opportunity to look at other things that are affecting the lagoons, such as nutrient runoff, uh, things that come from fertilizers, where you're seeing and phosphorus in the water, where you're seeing blooms of duckweed, which are decreasing the biodiversity of the lagoon and taking away from the natural habitat that was there. And then also I've had accounts from people telling me how flows throughout the lagoons and the golf course were a lot more, um, rampant than they are now, where people would kayak on it. So we're trying to understand if those change in flows are due to simple changes in weather patterns, or if it's something that we have done that has changed the way that we see things now. And if there's anything that we can do to fix that. So when I mentioned duckweed plumes, this is kind of what we're looking at. Of course, lily pads are to be expected, but the additional, you know, bits of green, those big areas, they take up a lot of oxygen and are have the potential to suffocate any sort of other plants or animals that are living there and then are creating dead zones, which are neither pretty nor healthy. And then the stagnant flows that we're seeing across the golf course, where it's even looking in some areas where flows might be going the opposite direction, indicating that there is a shift in the gradient and where things have gone historically, which would then suggest that there are other problems occurring. So going through this whole project, this is kind of a simplistic breakdown of what we're looking at. Of course, planning is going to be an ongoing process as we have a better idea of exactly what we're looking at. Um, and then researching along the way, looking at existing, existing drains, uh, the topography of the area, historic water levels, kind of see if it's a rain versus man-made issue. And then doing field investigation and interviews with people that are really experiencing this problem. And then taking that information, I'll be using all of my education and the resources that I have at the department to do a land use analysis and develop a watershed of where we're seeing waters come from, what kinds of land areas it's blowing over, which could then suggest what kind of speeds of water velocities we're looking at, what kind of uh, chemical contaminants could exist in those waters. Um, and then understanding, you know, where that falls in to any of the problems that we are seeing. And then using this modeling from the watershed, uh, we can see what current conditions we're looking at, but then also implement possible solutions. Whether that's, you know, existing drains or creating new drains, pulling off of those, um, to try and make, uh, come up with a feasible solution to solve these problems and then eventually make that a reality. So this is a, a pretty basic work breakdown of where we're looking at. Of course, you know, that estimated cost of a hundred thousand, that is split between the city, the county and our department, a large number of that, a good portion of that's going to be absorbed by us, uh, as, you know, I'm going through getting trained and then any of the internal work hours that we're doing. So that one hundred thousand is not going to be reliant on, you know, any one group. So it's going to be a pretty, um, homogeneous breakdown. But this is kind of what we're looking at. The previous work breakdown that I showed on the previous slide, this is where we get down the nitty gritty of it all to look at timelines and costs that would be associated with any of that. So this is Parks Park, the Cascades, the golf course. This is kind of the land area that we're looking at. And through, uh, my preliminary analysis, it looks like we're dealing with about a five-hundred acre area. That's a lot of water that we're going to be dealing with and a lot of different subdivisions and businesses that have to be accounted for. So in my research, I really got a topography, which is how I came up with that land area. Of course, you know, going forward, we're hoping to have contours that are even more detailed than the ones that we currently have, which could lend to more of an exact number for that, uh, land area that we're looking at, as well as understanding better which direction water flows are going. Uh, then taking that information, looking at the existing drain map, seeing where water is flowing, where water is being collected and, uh, observing how that's affecting the lagoons, as well as the, um, surrounding residential area, business area. Just kind of understand that the relationship that all those are having. And as I mentioned previously, looking at historic water levels, rainfalls, understanding if any of the change that we're seeing in the lagoons, water level, is because of something that has changed as far as development or if it's a climate issue. And then field investigations going in, really mapping out everything, getting into the nitty gritty, going out with a GPS, measuring everything, really understanding how water is flowing. And then also looking at, uh, the water breakdown and seeing what contaminants are in there biologically and chemically. And then doing the interviews with the homeowners, those that are affected with their basements being flooded, uh, talking to the city engineer, understands the city of Jackson, uh, talking with Jeff, our Drain Commissioner, where water is flowing within the drains, um, and then the Parks Department, who, you know, this is a park and seeing what they've seen over the years. This is a, a, um, smaller version of the contour map that we're looking at. We're seeing, you know, of course, in the subdivision, there's a higher elevation where we're getting a lot of runoff, which could add anything from, you know, gasoline on roadways, that fertilizer that I mentioned earlier, that could be getting into lagoons, causing problems. And then of course, the Cascades Falls themselves are built up and anything that's coming off of that is going into the lagoons, looking and seeing uh, where water is flowing and understanding what contaminants are in there. But like I said previously, we're hoping to get one-foot contours, as we've been working with, uh, GIS, so we can, we refine this map and our understanding. So then taking all this.
Just real quick. Could you just give a highlight of the last few slides and bring it to a close for us? Great.
These last few slides? Absolutely. So taking all of this information that I'll be gathering through research, I can then create a hydrologic model, which is uh, what you see here in the upper right, is a simplistic model of what we'd be looking at. But it would kind of help to model just what we're seeing right now and put it into numbers and figures. And so when we make any sort of changes with proposed solutions, whether that's culverts, catch basins, what have you, that putting those into the model, we can see if we'd be able to solve any of our problems. And then hopefully bring the lagoons to the wonder that they were and continue to make the Cascades Park a great park to visit.
Great job, Amelia. Thank you. So we're seeking approval from the Board to authorize at committee level thirty-five thousand for us to uh, contribute from the Parks budget, uh, towards this study. The city is pitching in thirty-five thousand and then JCDOT through training and purchase of topo maps and other things that we need anyway for uh, our work, uh, would make up the remainder of the project.
I'm moved. You have support? Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Give the sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chair. Given, uh, given the hour, I'm going to move to standard recess at the call of the chair.
Okay, any support? Passes. How long, how long are you asking for, Mr. Uh, Plesky? What are we talking about here? When are we coming back?
Uh, that'll be your call, Mr. Chair. I would suggest a few minutes after the conclusion of our eleven o'clock meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, I have a technical challenge here. Um, I have to end this meeting to open up the other meeting, so please come back to this meeting to finish when we finish the other meeting. Everyone will have to exit out of this meeting and go to the other meeting. Eleven o'clock meeting.
Thank you.
Michelle. Yep.
See you there, guys.